I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council meeting, Monday, November 3rd, 2025, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Agenda item number two, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
President.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Provost.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Chenier.
Present.
Thank you.
We have a quorum, moving on to agenda item number three, consider and accept the meeting minutes of October 20th, 2025.
I'm off.
There's a motion in a second. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
No.
To the minutes of that meeting? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, so all present. Moving on to agenda item number four, Subcommittee Reports, Department of Public Works. Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Agenda items number 13 through 16 are tonight's agenda to talk about for the DPW. We have not scheduled a DPW meeting as of yet, but probably in the next two weeks after Veterans Day, we'll be, most likely, we'll have a next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Educated Human Services, Counsel Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting last Tuesday, and there's just a couple items on the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. General Government, Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We have not had a meeting, so no report. We don't have a meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Planning and Development, Counsel Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting last Wednesday, the 29th of October. There were six items, 19 through 24, that are on tonight's agenda that we discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to E, Protections of Person and Property, Counsel Ari Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had a meeting last week on Tuesday, and agenda items number 10 and 18 were discussed. As of right now, we don't have any other meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, Chairman's Announcements. I have a few things. I would just like to speak to the people of Southbridge about having patience with all the roadwork that we're doing in Southbridge. I was up on Dresser Hill Road today, and the paving started. The grindings are all done, there is the structures. Our DPW Director has informed us, we're doing like forty streets. We're going to be doing them next year when we start in the springtime. We're going to continue to do them till the snow flies. We're trying to get them done before that. But what we need is patience. It is a mess when we have to do a street when we do the sewer water and drainage. It's very difficult. East Main Street is going to be ground and paved temporarily, only to be done fully in the spring, sidewalks included. And to date, we thank you for your patience, but it has to continue. We did not do roads for a good many years, and now we're tackling them head-on in a big volume. And I think in the end, you'll all be happy, but we're going to have to find some different avenues to try to alleviate hitting any of the working areas which make it difficult to travel. I'd like to thank the Veterans Auxiliary. We attended, Counsel attended, a lot of the councils attended the spaghetti dinner fundraiser that they had. I want to say that it was an outstanding fundraiser, well-attended, and a lot of fun. So I tip my hat to Veterans Auxiliary, you're making the boys look good on the Veterans Council. Moving on to 30 Mill Street. Everybody keeps asking what's going on with 30 Mill Street. 30 Mill Street is the old Hamilton Woolen Mill Factory that we did environmental testing, and we had an engineer go in and see if the building could be salvaged. It cannot be salvaged. Our building inspector, Ted Tetro, has put out the bids, will be finalized tomorrow, take the building down. We're waiting for a waiver from DCAM, which we should receive while we're in process of faking it down. That's it for my announcements. I'll move on to Presentations, number seven. At this time, I would like to have the Senator. You may go first. We have proclamations for David Parcell. This gentleman ran a lemonade stand, and he raised money, and he wanted to buy a dinner for the elderly. This little guy is one heck of a kid. In a day, in a place, with a society the way we are, this is something that I haven't seen as long as I've been sitting on the board. So at this time, I would like to ask the Senator, you're in charge to do your proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the members, and also all of the Southbridge community. We have a really special guest here, as you can see, bigger than his physical stature, leads on to be, and at ten years old, out there to change the world. And this is truly a wonderful thing, because America is blessed with many young boys and girls who are just trying to help their community, help their family, and do something exceptional. And that's exactly what David did not too long ago. And in order to honor that, I have a proclamation from the Massachusetts State Senate. It reads, "Be it hereby known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its congratulations to David Pusso in recognition of spreading kindness by generously using the proceeds from your lemonade stand to provide local seniors with a free meal. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success in all endeavors." That this citation be signed by the President of the Senate, Karen Spilka, and by your state Senator and huge superfan admirer, Ryan Fatman. David, congratulations, well done. I've got some young kids in my household, I hope they do exactly what you do. So I'm also joined, Mr. Chairman, by my friend John Marcy, and I want to give him an opportunity to present the citation from the House of Representatives, and then maybe I thought we might hear from this young man, if that would be okay, the star of the show. John?
Representative Marcy.
Hello, there. Thank you, Senator. Mr. Chairman, thank you for having me, through you, to the members and everybody here. Wow. I just have to say, wow. You know, there's one of the best parts of Senator Fatman and I, our role is to catch people doing something good, and you really did something good. And the fact that you came up with it on your own, you raised the money for it, and you selflessly came forward and said, "I want to do this," is just astounding, and I hope other kids can take your example moving forward. I'd also like to thank your parents, you've raised a good kid so far, and you know, you guys should be commended.[493.21][493.21](Applause). With all the negativity we hear in the world, you know, this is positive, and we want to celebrate that, and we want to celebrate you. So like the Senator said, this is from the Massachusetts House of Representatives. So we have two houses in our legislature, right? And this is in recognition of your outstanding example of true selflessness towards the senior citizens of Southbridge, Mass. And the entire House membership offers its best wishes and expresses hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, which I have no doubt you will do. And this is the third day of November 2025, here in good old Southbridge, and this is signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and myself, your state rep, John Marcy.
At this time, we have a local proclamation, and we have a gift from the Veterans Council. If we may, we'll join you. Then we're going to break five minutes to have a photo op with that young fellow. I would just like to take a minute to thank George Chenier. He was the driving force behind us. He wanted to recognize this young fellow in a big way, and he was at the Elderly Center, Elder Center when they had the dinner and stuff. He was so impressed by it, he came to the council, and we said, "We, you know, you're right, George, let's do something." And here we are. Dave, I want you to know, this is more important than the Senator and the representative, because this is from Southbridge. Proclamation, Master David Pousa. Over the summer of 2025, ten-year-old David Parcell of Southbridge, Massachusetts decided to spread some kindness with the free lemonade stand. Many people graciously tipped this young man for his kindness. With the money he collected, David decided that he wanted to extend his kindness by generously offering to provide to senior citizens of the Southbridge Senior Center with a free meal of pasta, salad, bread, and dessert from Napoli's Restaurant in Sturbridge. David is currently in the fifth grader at the old Sturbridge Village Academy. His parents are Christopher and Harley Folgeretti of Southbridge. Now therefore, the Town Council of Southbridge does hereby honor David Parcell for his outstanding example of true selflessness towards the seniors of Southbridge, Massachusetts. The third day, November 25th, I congratulate you and I thank you.[691.62][691.62](Applause). At this time, we have Dave Adams, who has a presentation from the Veterans Council. Dave?
Senator, Representative, Chair, Town Council, Town Manager, residents of Southbridge. First of all, the coolest thing is going up here is the fact that your name is Dave, and that's pretty damn cool. So is mine, go figure. So, one thing, we, I got to eat, and I met you before, and we got to eat over at the Senior Center, and then one of my veterans, Dave Pear, came up to me and said, "What do you think about our next meeting? We voting, we vote to help you out financially a little bit?" And I said, "Absolutely, and the veterans that are out here right now, we, from the Veterans Council, we really appreciate your vote unanimously to help provide something," because they're a little birdie, it may have been Santa Claus or something like that. But he said that you're starting something for Christmas. And so we wanted to help kick that off for you, and we have a check here for $200 for you, to go a long way, since you helped everybody else, we wanted to make sure we helped you.
At this time, I'd like to have a five-minute recess, so we could just do a photo op with this young man. I think you might want to go sit up in the big chair up there, in the Senator, and the rep can meet you up there, and you can stand behind you, is that okay?
Mr. Chair, can we have David speak to council and to the citizens of the town?
Oh, David, you have a speech?[804.82][804.82](Laughter). Go ahead. Talk to him.
Thank you for all, thank you all for coming. I'm really happy to be here, here.[819.00][819.00](Applause).
Thank you very much. So there's a five-minute recess. I'd like to bring the meeting back in session. At this time, we have another presentation by Dave Adams, Veteran Council Update. Dave?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Town Council, Town Manager, residents. So I want to give you a quick update on the initiative and a few other things that the Veterans Council of Southbridge is doing. First, I want to thank all of you counselors and town manager for attending the auxiliary, as the Chair had spoke earlier, the auxiliary donations. It was their first fundraiser, so I appreciate every single counselor who brought their friends and family, and all nine of you showed up, and we really appreciate it, went a long way, and what a success that was that evening. Many may not know, a couple years ago, I think in 2001, or 2020, 2021, we had about two, two or three members left of the Veterans Council that used to represent all the posts here in the town. We have now close to twenty-five to thirty veteran council members now at this point in time, and now we just added on an auxiliary. It's growing that much, and we're helping out our local surviving spouses, adult-dependent children, and veterans themselves with things like rental assistance, food assistance. Also, we put on all the parades and stuff like that, we make sure the flags are raised high every single day throughout the evening with the soul lights. So we've done quite a bit, and I appreciate the support that the council has given us over the last four years, I really do appreciate it, it goes a long way. So I'll start on the initiative. The initiative was, I do this every six months out of transparency, to make sure you guys are aware that we are working on rebuilding our parks, our veterans' parks, and one obviously is the Memorial Park across the street. That was done for about $190,000, and really no local taxpayer money, but mostly donations. And that's been done, it's completed, and recently we just put the plaque behind it on the sign. On the sign itself, if you take your phone, it's a QR code right there, it actually gives the old video of 1938 when that monument was dedicated, along with some pictures of groundbreaking, and the thank you to all the donors that provided funds to us to help make that a success. Now we're working on a $2 million project within Southbridge over the Dresser Memorial Park. All right? As you can see, here's a picture of World War Memorial Park, that's pretty much afterwards, it used to be just one monument. And I do, again, do this every six months, so it may be, you know, something very repetitive. We acquired the Frank American plaque that's off to the right, if you look at it, it's all in French. We put those new benches in, the new signs, and a lot of this was locally done, and we really appreciate it, and all the gold stars/neighborhood monuments from World War I for those that died in combat in France during the war, the First War. Now, the next park we're still on is Dresser Memorial, again, that's about a $2 million cost. We consider this, what we're in right now is a phase two of the entire project, ninety to ninety-five percent survey, engineering study, electrical engineering studies have all been completed, the design has pretty much been completed as well, and we're in the fundraising process. We're pretty successful at doing that, but we want to make sure we have cash on hand when we bring it to the town, so we can go ahead and do the scope of work within the community. Right now, the Veterans Council is also working on OIF/OEF, which is Afghanistan area, is Operation Iraqi Freedom, Iraqi Freedom and Expeditionary Freedom. So, and the POW/MIA monument, those are three monuments we're working on right now, and I've been working with the state, the movement of the Polish Veterans Monument that's in front of the old Polish club. And then as far as the placement of monuments, we have quite a few monuments that are sitting over at the DPW. We also have the Hiker Monument that will be moved into the DPW very soon, when they start the road project, or the tip project, I think it's next year. This is kind of the design of it, where some of the monuments will go, you'll notice that Dresser Memorial Park has quite, quite much space, and we plan on it growing. The honor roll itself that's sitting there, it's starting to decay, and what we decided to do was put it in granite, all the names, and the ability to grow and grow and grow, unfortunately, due to wars and those that serve our country. Again, we're going to put benches across the way, we're going to expand the driveway itself, we've got the path that we're talking about, we're going to take that old cannon that's sitting on some cinder blocks, or they cemented the tires, we're going to put the new tires back on them, and refurbish that monument, and we're going to be putting OIF/OEF monuments around the park, along with the POW/MIA monument. And I believe there's three monuments at the DPW right now, sitting there, plus the Hiker Monument, the Polish-American monument, I mean, you name it, we're going to put all those monuments within the park. We are selling bricks and quite a few other things, but we are looking for funds, we want to fundraise this thing through, instead of asking the Town Council to increase the budget and pay for it itself, and then the constant upkeep to it. This is kind of a side design of it. And it's obviously conceptual design, it's not a final design, final design is really going to happen when it's finalized. Next thing, I just wanted to tell the Town Council and the town people here, we have a Veterans Day ceremony on November 11th at 10:30 in the morning at the Memorial Park. It will probably last about forty-five minutes, and then we'll be done. Lastly, we have the Southbridge Veterans Day Luncheon. There used to be thirty to forty individuals that showed up, the veterans themselves, last year we had close to 200 veterans and family members and supporters show up. So I still ask you to RSVP to the number that's below, I believe we got a count today of close to 155, 155 that have confirmed, and we have sponsors that also provide it, and we give them a table, and I think we have like fifty-five seats there. So if everything is filled right now, we have over 200 people attending the event, and I expect that to grow as we go along the next few days, and thanks to our town VSO, he's really kept good track of everything that's going on, just give me a check. Lastly, if you want to donate to the initiative, I provide you guys a link, you can roll that back on, you know, your local cable network and your YouTube videos, and then it'll be there. And if you're more technically sound than most of us here, you can use that QR code, it'll go right to See My Legacy, which is a startup company that we're utilizing to raise funds for multiple events, including coins, supporting the Dresser Memorial Park, and general funds to the Veterans Council itself. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, job well done. I'd like to circle back to agenda item number six, Town Manager's Announcements. Madam Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I have a few announcements today. The Agent for Solid Waste and Recycling wanted me to share that any homeowner interested in opting out of the municipal curbside collection program may do so during the month of November. There is an opt-out feature available on the town's main page. Evidence in the form of a valid contact may be uploaded on the website or provided to the curbside office. Any questions, please feel free to call 508-764-5354. The municipal yard waste curbside collection continues until the week of November 10th. Place yard waste on curb in brown paper bags or open containers on the day of your trash collection. The town offers compost bins for $25 for those with yard space and willing to invest the time to turn it into something that can be reused, like plants, vegetables, et cetera. You can see the curbside office for more information on that. And lastly, following some information received regarding errors with the Curbside Enterprise Fund, the accounting department has made the following corrections through journal entries. Town collection bills entered against the Curbside Enterprise Fund have been corrected to the proper account in the general fund. Software bills that were paid 100% from the Curbside Enterprise Fund now reflect the three-way split payment from water and sewer funds per the agreement as well. The town has also taken steps to review the curbside collection program, starting with a review of the tonnage reports. We will bring our findings to a PPP Subcommittee meeting upon completion. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number eight, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council on any issues not on Name and address.
Hello, Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. Good evening to everybody. It's November, and it's that time of the year that the streets of Southbridge will begin to look like a little Hallmark card, or thereabouts. And having said that, some of you may not be aware, but those items that you see decorating our streets are put out by our little volunteer group, and I mean little, Southbridge Holiday Visions. We are always looking for people to volunteer and take part in what we do each year. Some of the opportunities that exist are helping at our warehouse located on Mill Street to prep and get those items ready for distribution, perhaps working distribution when we do that, which is slated for this weekend, but that may have to be postponed due to weather. And you can find out all that information on the Southbridge Holiday Visions Facebook page. It's an open page, so all you have to do is Google us. If you don't even know how to do Facebook, just Google "Southbridge Holiday Visions", and you will get lots of information on the group, and you will see that Facebook page, and it's updated pretty regularly, four hours, delays, anything that's going on, and that is also where you'll find my contact information, and also our email, which you can get in touch with us. So, having said all that, a couple of things, beyond the decorations, you might also be aware that we host an event. What started out as a simple tree lighting has now grown into an elaborate, elaborate event with a full-fledged parade, if you've never gone to it. It is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, this year it will be November 29th. It takes place pretty much all over Southbridge. The parade kicks off at 5:00 from the Wellsworth Hotel parking area, and travels around town when it finishes back at the Town Common, where Santa sits for photos, free photos, bring your phone, your cameras, and free photos with the children, and cocoa and cookies distributed courtesy of Wellsworth. We have coffee courtesy this year of Moon Magic, and many other, many other things, DJ Ellis, and many other surprises. But again, you can find that information on Southbridge Holiday Visions Facebook page, or by contacting me, again, from Southbridge Holiday Visions Facebook page. So again, we could really use some extra hands. Distribution was slated for this weekend, you'll might see paperwork like this. The rain date is next weekend, so I suggest that you just pay attention to what's going on online, and you'll know whether or not you can come out and help us. We have jobs for everybody, from the small to the large. If you can lift things, pick them up, put them down, that really helps. If you can just sweep a floor and clean up our warehouse while we're doing all this work, that's great, too. We try to provide little refreshments for people, keep you going all day, give you some lunch if you're there for the day, and really just get our Southbridge ready, dressed for the holidays. So again, reach out if you have any questions, we hope to see you this year. Join the parade, we will have our "Join the Parade" signs posted on the Southbridge Cable Television Station and along other places. Get your people together, get your families together, your workplace together, and enter to join the parade. It's a great time for everybody, so we thank you very much for your time, we thank the council. We are a ad hoc committee of the Southbridge Town Council, we are fully funded by private donation, and we are fortunate to have that, and we just do our work, and we are very lucky to have the Police Department and the Fire Department support us in the efforts that evening. So thanks to the town for that, and if you have any questions, comments, I'm open to that.
Any questions, Counsel?
Anyone questions for me?
Counsel Dow?
I want to say thank you for you and your family for keeping that tradition going forward, thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome. Sixteen, I think we're at sixteen years this year. But again, that evening, I could use a few more hands, if you've got a couple of hours to spare, reach out, let me know. It doesn't, it takes many hands to make this, to make this come to life, so it's pretty magical for the kids, and for the grownups, too. So, thank you.
On behalf of the council, we thank you and your family and your volunteers for what you do for the town of Southbridge. Thank you, Denise. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the Town Council on any issues not on the agenda? State your name and address.
Shelley Klein, 56 Newell Ave. I just want to say thank you to Nor and the rest of the team in the Town Hall for starting to address the curbside issues and make those corrections, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about how we're going to make amends to residents for the charges that we should not have happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council? State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Rivers. I reside at 92 Harrington Street. Good evening, Town Council, good evening, Mr. Chairman. I come to you tonight as a citizen, not as a school committee member. I'm following what's going on, recent developments, and I'm not sure why it's happening. I arrived in Southbridge when I- I arrived in Southbridge when I was five years old, so I wasn't born here. I came from Boston. I was raised with honor, integrity, respect, and the fire department, to me, has always shown honor, integrity, respect, even when I was little and growing up in this town. That's what I saw, from my own personal opinion. Many times, I've had to call on the fire department for emergencies. They've always answered the call, no questions asked, especially last year, when I needed emergency surgery. They were right there, EMS. I'm not sure exactly what's going on, but I think there needs to be more conversations between local officials and the fire department, and try and clear up any misunderstandings that are happening. But in my own opinion, and I'm sure many other people in this community, whatever the fire department wants, give them whatever they ask for, whenever they ask for it, no questions asked.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on any issues not on the agenda? If not, I'd like to move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, vote to accept a donation of $100 from Cormier Jewelers and allow the recreation director to use it at their discretion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Councilor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was voted unanimously in favor at subcommittee.
Any further discussion? If not, all?
Just want to say thank you to them, because I know they've given a lot to this community, and they continue to do so. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all was in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 10, vote to accept a donation of $5,000 from the Southbridge Credit Union and allow the chief of police to use it at their discretion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This was voted in favor unanimously.
Any further discussion? Council Adams?
Southbridge Credit Union, I hate to bid that horse here, but I got to tell you, they have stepped up on every organization that there is out there to help donate to our local charities. They've helped the Veterans Council, Don Silry. I'm sure they've helped out quite a few more out there, but thank you very much for your generosity to our residents. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all was in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 11, vote to accept a digital equity grant award in the amount of $77,792. Allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion? Council, go ahead.
This was recommended favorably unanimously at subcommittee.
Favorable at subcommittee? Council Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'm sorry, I must have missed this meeting, but I don't recall what this is about. What is a digital equity grant? And what is for? What is it for?
Good evening. Katie Yoder, Town Planner, through you, Chair. This digital equity grant is in partnership with Massachusetts Broadband Institute. Our IT Director, Victor Ruhl, has been working with them over the last year for a digital equity plan. Out of that came recommendations for action items that, again, through Massachusetts Broadband Institute, they're the source of the $77,000. So the recommendations that were pulled from that plan are specifically for digital literacy, device distribution, education and outreach, so some different programming, probably through the library and the senior center, the opportunity to purchase hotspots for the library for checkout by patrons, and then Spanish language services for digital learning for residents.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all was in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12, vote to authorize a payment of a prior year invoice to tie-in bond in the amount of $3,990 for the well study water testing at 55 Pleasant Street from specialized services, number 001512-530000. Play our motion.
So moved.
Second.
Play our second. There's a second. They will take a two-thirds vote. Just, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was recommended unanimously at subcommittee. After further research in Robert's rules, it takes four fifths votes, so we do need eight out of nine to pay prior year bills.
Standing corrected. Any further discussion?
So I recall this. I wasn't on the council at the time, but I believe the Board of Health was the one who approved this expenditure. But can I get an explanation who actually, we, the Town Council approves the funding for that? So how did that all happen? Who actually approved to do the work? Because it's a contract for services, and we're asked tonight to approve it from a previous fiscal year, but I don't remember anybody up here on the council that was here at the time voting in favor for the services itself. I just need an explanation why. Or maybe I'm missing something here.
Madam Town Manager? Any idea?
I will say I'm not completely clear on the details. I do know that the authorization came through the town manager for those services. The department head went ahead and procured those services for the testing. The payment was missed in the last fiscal year, and this is why we're bringing it at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Councilor Gignan?
If I may help with the issue. I brought this to the town manager's last week, on Friday afternoon at about 3:00 in the afternoon, and she was going to do some research. She's, she has told me, and I believe in her in good faith, that she's going to bring this to the subcommittee once she gets the determination made on exactly what happened. But regardless, it's a bill of services that the town contracted for, and I think it should be paid. But I take her at her word that she's going to bring this back to council and with a outcome of what transpired. So we can either prevent it from happening, or maybe it's not an issue that's even an issue. But I think we have to give her the time to do the research.
Council Adams?
Respond to that. There's no doubt in my mind, we need to pay the bill. That's not the problem here. The problem here is how it went about. What was the process in which it happened and took place? I have a question on that, because I heard differently during this period of time, and I think that needs to be explained at the EHS meeting to explain that whole thing and how that transpired. I'm not saying it didn't need to be done. I'm not saying it doesn't need to be paid, but the process in which it is forces the council to do a four-fifths vote tonight on this issue that should have been taken care of last fiscal year and should have been approved by the Town Council that was sitting here during that period of time. That's all I have. I'm not going to vote no, got to pay the damn bill, but, you know.
I think, I think what we're going to do is, Jack will be back in three weeks. We'll have to have a sit-down at subcommittee to explain this and how it came about. I think everybody's sitting there, and it's unfair for the acting town manager, who was not in charge at that time, to explain it. So I thank you for your efforts, but for a week, three weeks, it will go to the subcommittee, and we will get those answers. Council Montigny?
So, Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion to refer back to subcommittee until December?
Only if you don't want to pay the bill. Council Dow?
I think we should approve it tonight, because we own it. So regardless of who approved the work, we still own that money. We should pay the people and then investigate what happened then. Thank you.
Roll call.
Okay. Council Lazo?
Yes.
Councilor Montigny?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Shenier?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Dow?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilor Provost?
Yes.
Your names.
Motion passes, and I will bring this up three weeks from now, when the town manager is back and seated, and we will, we'll deal with it at that time. This is not done yet. Moving on to 13, vote to authorize DPW to pay prior year invoice from WB Mason in the amount of $961.70 for the purchase of new office furniture from the FY26 Small Capital Account, number 583000.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. This is, this is a four-fifths also? Discussion? Council?
Mr. Chair, so it went through my subcommittee unanimously of all present, prior year, four-fifths vote tonight. We did have a discussion on why it took so long, and if you look at the dates, I believe it was on the last day of June, and then obviously, we get the bill afterwards. That's the way it works, but that's, that's my reasoning, vote in favor of.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilor Montigny?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Shenier?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Dow?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilor Provost?
Yes.
Councilor Lazo?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Moving on to number 14, vote to authorize DPW to pay a prior year bill invoice from Whitewater in the amount of $19,875.68 for 2024, 2025 snowplow. $15,500 to be paid from the FY25 PO number 20253372, and $44,373.68 to be paid from FY26 Stone Ice Specialized Services Account, 001495-529000.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. It will take four fifths also. Discussion?
Unanimous of all present to move forward.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chair? Sorry?
I just think that we maybe need to explain that it's not for a snowplow, it's for snow plowing services.
Correct. Type poll. Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Shenier?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Dow?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilor Provost?
Yes.
Councilor Lazo?
Yes.
Councilor Montigny?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to number 15, vote to approve a one-year extension of the existing service contract with Elevator Maintenance through September 20th, 2026. Allow town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Discussion?
Unanimous of all present to move forward from DPW.
Any further discussion? If not, all was in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 16, vote to approve a one-year extension of the existing service contract with SS Service Corp. for HVAC systems and control maintenance and repair through September 26th, 2026. Allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Motion, a second.
Unanimous of all, all present to recommend moving forward with it, DPW. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all was in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 17, vote to approve entering into a contract with FUSC in O'Neill for asbestos containing materials consulting services for $5,000 using the account 003240-58990-9126 and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
A motion, a second?
Mr. Chair?
Council?
I would like to do a roll call vote on this.
Council?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Based on what we found here recently and the discussions that we've had, is this even relevant anymore until we figure out the costs of other things that has to happen with that building?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. This is required by DEP, and we got our conditional approval to move ahead with the demolition pending this plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call was requested. Roll call. Madam Secretary?
Councilor Shenier?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Dow?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilor Provost?
Yes.
Councilor Lazo?
Yes.
Councilor Montigny?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilor Provost?
Yes.
Councilor Lazo?
Yes.
Councilor Montigny?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilor Provost?
Yes.
Councilor Lazo?
Yes.
Councilor Montigny?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilor Provost?
Yes.
Councilor Lazo?
Yes.
Councilor Montigny?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to number 18, vote to authorize DPW to pay a prior year bill invoice from Whitewater in the amount of $19,875.68 for 2024, 2025 snowplow. $15,500 to be paid from the FY25 PO number 20253372, and $44,373.68 to be paid from FY26 Stone Ice Specialized Services Account, 001495-529000. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. It will take four fifths also. Discussion?
Unanimous of all present to move forward. [inaudible]
Any further discussion? If not, all was in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 19, vote to approve a one-year extension of the existing service contract with SS Service Corp. for HVAC systems and control maintenance and repair through September 26th, 2026. Allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Motion, a second.
Unanimous of all, all present to recommend moving forward with it, DPW. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all was in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to 17, vote to approve entering into a contract with FUSC in O'Neill for asbestos containing materials consulting services for $5,000 using the account 003240-58990-9126 and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
A motion, a second?
Mr. Chair?
Council?
I would like to do a roll call vote on this.
Council?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Based on what we found here recently and the discussions that we've had, is this even relevant anymore until we figure out the costs of other things that has to happen with that building?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. This is required by DEP, and we got our conditional approval to move ahead with the demolition pending this plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call was requested. Roll call. Madam Secretary?
Councilor Shenier?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Dow?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilor Provost?
Yes.
decision or the wrong decision in ten years from now, but we do have facts and we need to pay attention to those. Thank you.
If there are any other citizens, I would like to address the council on this issue. State your name and address.
Roland Larochelle, one thirty Briarwood Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to go a little bit different spin than the previous speaker because she had all her numbers in her ducks in a row. I'm going to speak for myself. I was born, raised and remain a resident of this community and through the years I've witnessed many, many changes, most for the best, but none of them without overcoming the growing pains that come with daring to do something different. I've watched all the meetings, we got interchange from local dispatch to regional. The chiefs and other subject matter experts, they explain the impact to this community as well as to our first responders in what I consider to be a very easy, well organized, in logical manner. Comments that came out of those meetings ranged from understanding and agreeing with the, the, the people that were talking, the subject matter experts, financial concerns, which is everybody's concern, all the way to extreme insults and use of improper language. I understand the financial concerns. As a contractor, I am fully aware on how cost impacts business. Running a town is a business. Educating yourself and your customers on the facts and being honest will yield a positive result. It did to me. It's not always about the bottom line. With the service and a product you receive, will it be safer? Will it have a longer longevity than those that may be under budget, off the shelf and are cheaper? In layman's terms, will you get the bang for your buck? As a retired salvage firefighter and a proud retired salvage firefighter, EMT, for over thirty-three years, I have experienced many changes in that trade. From Prop two and a half, DH pandemic, nine-one-one attack, twenty-eleven tornado, the biological hazards such as anthrax, Ebola, and most recently COVID, to name a few, none of these situations could have been addressed without working in partnership with others. As an educator with the state fire academy, networking with firefighters from all areas of this state as well as other states has revealed to me that we are not alone in this type of endeavor. I've learned many other things from my experience. The past is the past. We must learn from it, but you cannot go back. If you do not keep up with the times, you will also be left in the dust and you will not be effective in your craft. I don't know what the issue is with this proposal. It seems to be a no-brainer, but the egos and any personal agenda must be left at the door. The bullying has to stop. This is the people's work. This community is not an island and cannot succeed alone. It's a community with over seventeen thousand people and this issue directs every single one of us and the future of the public safety system that we know and love. A decision made by five or six individuals, some of which publicly stated that they will never change their mind is doing our community no good. As the chair stated many times, we can agree to disagree, but the comments and actions of some of the councilors show total disregard on this issue and our first responders. Ladies and gentlemen, we are on the verge of celebrating two hundred and fifty years of freedom from dictatorship. We cannot let it return. So I'm asking the council, the duly elected officials in this town, if you're truly concerned about serving the all and not the one, vote tonight to join the regional dispatch. If you do not wish to join the regional dispatch, vote tonight to let the seventeen-plus-thousand people tell you what they want and put the question on the ballot.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on this issue?
Good evening, my name is Helen Boyle, I live at one twenty-one Everett Street. The firefighters, they definitely need our support. They need the respect for what they do. They run in when they're, when everybody else is running out. But I'm also going to speak as a mother of a dispatcher. They are overwhelmed at times and it is a hard job. My daughter's been doing it for several years. She did a dispatching here in Southbridge for many years. She now works at another dispatch. So talk to your dispatchers over the course, not just one, not just two, but talk to several. Please put this on the ballot. Either way, let the town speak, let them speak for our firefighters. Let us speak for them. Let us work together and be more knowledgeable, more, more information needs to come out.
Are there any other citizens that would like to approach the council? State your name and address.
Gary Belanger, twenty-one Wall Street. First, I'd like to say that salvage PD, you guys do a hell of a job. Salvage Fire Department, you do a hell of a job. But, but, the chief of the fire department needs to get the department under control. You make salvage a laughing stock. You want to threaten the citizens.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, we're on the dispatch agenda, I'm not slamming our chiefs or any of our staff members here.
All right. I do not believe that we should be on Facebook saying that our council is being terrible.
Excuse me, I don't want to cut anybody off, I want everybody to have their opinion. We're talking about the dispatch.
Correct.
And I know that there's a lot of stuff that's going along with the dispatch, but try and stay on task with, with the dispatch.
With people turning around, want to say that salvage is all for it, all for it, they're not. There's people that will not come up here and talk, first time I came up here and talked, but the town needs to come up and talk because we can't be threatened on doing something because they're threatening us to vote yes for this. It's the threat of the people. We were threatened when we needed a fire station, we needed one, but three years ago when we voted for a fire station, they said within six months, the ambulance, the fire trucks aren't going to come out of the fire station. What are you going to do? You're going to go vote yes. Yep, we needed one, but don't lie to the people of Southbridge. I'm born and raised in Southbridge and don't lie to us. It's still coming in and out of that fire station. You want to say you want this? Go ahead. I was just asked today, how many people is going to be in this place? You said eleven. They came up with the number of fourteen. How many dispatches are there? Fourteen, eleven? What is it? What's the number? So you want to throw numbers out at eleven when we're told, on fourteen, when I was told eleven, so if we want to change numbers, what's the true numbers? Let's come out with facts and the truth. That's all I'm asking. I mean, they do a great job. Both departments do a great job in this town. I won't take anything away from that, but the lying and saying, oh, I hope you don't need to be helped, really? So if that's going to be said, maybe they shouldn't be working for this town because don't threaten me, if I want to open my mouth, they're not going to protect me in this town. That's what people don't come out and speak. I work for a union. A union sticks together. All the fire department, police people, they'll stick together, but you take them on their own, they'll talk different, but all as a group, they will not. That's all I'm saying, do not threaten the council, don't threaten the citizens of Southbridge. Is that hard? I don't think it's hard. That's all they do. Facebook and all that, you don't agree with us, this is wrong. Don't bash the council, don't bash the people. You want to talk seventeen thousand? Seventeen thousand voted all these people in? Just because you didn't like who got voted in? Don't, I don't agree with all of them, but you can't just say, oh, they're bad, they're bad, they're bad. Come on, people, wake up. Don't tell the people that. Let's scare all the elderly, say, oh, we're not going to be able to rescue you. That's sickening, reading that on Facebook, being born and raised in this town and that's how you guys want to talk? Everybody in this town, if you ask them, great fire department, great police station.
Mr. Chairman, you're talking for dispatch.
He's talking about, you're out of order, Mr. Larochelle. He's allowed to speak, he's a citizen. He's talking about the process.
And if you want to go dispatch, I'll go dispatch. Last one just said, oh, they're overwhelmed. So if we go to regional, none of them's going to be overwhelmed? If we pay them, what's the difference? There's no difference. They're in town or they're out somewhere else. They're not overwhelmed if you get paid. If you're overwhelmed, it's on the job for you. Teach them right and that's it.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council at this time? If not, we have a motion and a second and.
Hi, Denise Clements, one twenty-eight Country Club Place. For somebody who served on council for nine years, duly elected by citizens, many different types, you serve, each, each of you, and I've said this to most of you at some time or another, you're elected independently, independently by the people out there, whether you ran together with others or not, you are each, your names are individually put on those ballots and you are each individually elected for your thoughts, your beliefs, your concerns and the concerns of the constituents who put you in office. However, this council especially tends to be in this all for one, one for all.
Out of order, Your Honor, we're talking about dispatch.
No, 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 it's about dispatch, it's about your vote. It's about the vote for dispatch. I am asking, I am asking that each of you remember your constituents and who put you up here and remember the people that the audience maybe can't see, that this is a full-packed house in regard to this issue and the safety. I'm speaking, thank you, Mr. Dow. I won't interrupt you when you speak. The safety of this community and what has been recommended by our top officials and the many people that are here today, many who live in this community, and they're looking at you, the elected officials, and they're asking you to consider their professional opinions in what this community needs. I have heard about regional dispatch since I was on council. Then we went to the dispatch all-for-one scenario at the, at the police department and spent some money on that. We didn't still go regional and now here we are with the numbers that show what will go forward. To the last person's point, when you have a group and a large entity such as what they're, what they're proposing in the region, in the regional dispatch, you have a lot more opportunity to have a larger pool of employees with specific benefits and such and therefore your, your rates of needing to call a firefighter to come in and fill in because you don't have workers is, is a much less issue that you would have in the regional center because they are more equipped to have the right amount of people in their, in their situation. So anyway, I'm not, I'm not a professional on the regional dispatch. What I am is a citizen. I'm also somebody who served and understands that it's very difficult to stand up for your constituents when you've got counselors in your ear asking you what to do and how to do it. I'm asking you to each individually really think about what was proposed to you at the meetings, the information you have, the information that Ms. Klein brought forward tonight, which is even more, more decisive, and do the right thing and vote for regional dispatch for Southbridge to join all those other communities and put their resources and their funds together. Save the community some tax money, vote for regional dispatch.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the town council? I wanted to make sure that each and every person gets to address the town council on this issue. Can you name an address?
Still Gary. Each one of you council members have an email, correct? So residents of this town can email you and give you your opinion of what they think about this, correct? So if you guys are reading emails, not that you have to put out names because that's all personal, if they don't want to come up here and talk and tell you that I do not want this for my town, are you voting for yourself? Are you voting for the town of Southbridge? That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other citizens, I would like to open it up to the councilors. Council, any comments? Council Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This is an idea whose time has come. Let me explain what I see to cause me to support this item. There will be seven people on duty per shift at the regional center versus our current one to three, which depends on illness, vacation, training or other calling out. Southbridge dispatches are responsible, according to a PowerPoint presentation presented to us by the chiefs of police and fire, for a total of eighty-one other ancillary tasks while dispatching. Of course, this is not all at once, but all must be accounted for at some time during the day or night, meaning during a shift. If there is a major incident, some of these tasks will interfere with the smooth operation of the dispatcher. For instance, if there's only one dispatcher on duty on an overnight shift and there's a major incident, the dispatcher must monitor and answer radio traffic, monitor the phones and dispatch resources to other calls because the rest of the town is still active, call for backup or mutual aid according to existing protocols, monitor video screens for the lobby and prisoner cells, et cetera, as this is an active working police department that the dispatch center is housed in. If there is a second dispatcher on duty and one is dedicated to the incident, the other must assume control of all other tasks and would have difficulty efficiently helping the first dispatcher. Saying that for safety reasons, dispatchers should be local because they know the area is a red herring. It has proven that regional dispatch works in large areas where the people staffing the center could not possibly know the entire area. Today's technology is a far cry from the street list books that I used when I was working for an ambulance service in the eighties. As far as cost of the town go, if we were to hire all the people that we need and keep them, we will have to increase our salary and benefit package to meet that which we will be competing against. Look what's happening right now to police and fire. We hire and train people and then they go on to greener pastures. That's a tough sell because we have to add in future road repair costs that our citizens want, the new fire station, potential town hall repair costs and fixed overhead that the town pays just to keep it running like utilities, fuel, casualty and health insurance. The overhead costs go up every year. Our citizens are clamoring for some sort of a break. It seems to me that if we get an increased level of service for less costs upfront and going down the road, this is an idea whose time has come. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to explain why I am going to vote for this proposal. And I hope I don't simply repeat what Counselor Daniels just said, but I want to go into a little detail. This venture started as a feasibility study between Charlton, Sturbridge, Auburn, Spencer and Southbridge, five towns. Five towns hired a consultant to study whether or not it was even feasible to enter into this program. And we did that because of, of the challenges faced by each town with their current dispatch systems. That study was returned and it was highly recommended that the five towns enter into a regional emergency communication center. The fire chiefs of Charlton, the police chief of Charlton, the fire chief of Sturbridge, the police chief of Sturbridge, the fire chief of Auburn, the police chief of Auburn, the fire chief of Spencer, the police chief of Spencer, and our own fire chief and police chief, as well as our own town manager, agreed that this was the best way to serve the public interest, to serve the citizens of Southbridge, to ensure the safety of the public. Those are the subject matter experts. They know public safety, I don't. They've been doing this for years. The combined experience of those individuals is hundreds of years. I have to, I have to take that recommendation seriously, very seriously, when a subject matter expert is telling me what is in the best interest of public safety, the public safety subject matters. So that's where I start, but that's not where I end. So certainly I have some deference to those individuals. But I want, but in this community, our fire But I want, but in this community, our fire chief supports it, our police chief supports it, but not only they support it, our police union supports it, our fire union supports it, more subject matter experts saying this is the best for public safety. That's convincing argument right there. That's a convincing argument right there. I could stop there, but I'm not going to. When I have to make a decision, I like to do a pro and con list, so I did that. There are always pros and cons. Every decision we make, as my, my role as a town counselor is to make a decision that is in the best interest of Southbridge, that's what you elected me for. So I sat down and I did pros and cons. Let's talk about financial, financial pros. We will incur a cost savings on this. There is no doubt. Currently, in operations alone for dispatch, we spend $592,144. And that just includes personnel salary, pretty much. Then you have fringe benefits for those employees, medical, retirement, et cetera. That's $324,233. Then you have $97,514 that includes various things like training and equipment and things of that nature. For a grand total of $1,013,902. What's proposed is that we go into a regional system, and it's more than the five towns now. What's proposed is that we go into a central Massachusetts emergency communications center or district. So that not only includes the five towns mentioned before, but that'll also include five additional towns, which would be Barry, Hubbardston, Oakham, Rutland, and Warren. And I've been, I'm told, and I'm told that three other towns also are looking to join this, this district. If we join this district, our assessment annually will be $390,984. That's quite a savings, right there. But that's not where it stops. The center is going to be up and running if we elect, elect to do this. The center will be up and running in 2027. So there'll be a transition period. The center will be built with grants from the state 911 authority. And with those grants, we will not pay anything in 2027. We will not pay anything in 2028, 2029, or 2030. The first bill comes due 2031, and that'll be 50% of our assessment. In 2032, we will pay 75% of our assessment. And in 2033, we will finally pay the full assessment. Now, the $390,984 is based on the 10 towns. If the three additional towns join, that will go down as well. So there's really no downside from a financial end. What about staffing and performance? Right now, we have nine employees in dispatch. We typically have two on duty at any one time. During the day, there are three because there's a supervisor, but we only have one supervisor. The individuals that work the mid-shift and the late and the night shift, they're not supervised directly during those times. They often get overwhelmed. Last year, we had over 41,000 emergency calls. Forty-one thousand they handled. While those individuals are in, on duty, they also have other, other duties. They have duties, they're sitting in the police station, they have duties with prisoners. They have duties to answer the door and the other, and the administrative line, the business It's a lot of, it's just only a few people, just a couple of people answer all those calls. We're a busy community. We're a busy town. We have busy services. Staffing at the, at the center will include four dedicated police dispatchers, four, three dedicated fire and EMS dispatchers, three call takers to answer non-emergency calls, and a supervisor on each shift. That is one shift. We can't buy that in Southbridge. We don't have the funds. First of all, we can't compete salary-wise. We can't recruit people to do this job. And when we do find somebody to do this job, they get, we train them, and then they go to a regional center because they pay more, and the benefits are better. We have lost, we have turned over 10 people in five years in dispatch. In addition, those people will have access to specialized training that we can't provide them. They'll be better at their job than what we can do. All right. Now, I've heard, well, these people aren't local. They won't know our community. Not one of the employees in dispatch today, it was raised here, was born here, or lives here. They're all from out of town. What else will we get by going regional? Enhanced technology. One of the expenses we're going to have in the next six years if we keep dispatch in this town is we're going to have to buy a new radio control board to keep up with the technology. That's $390,000. That's an expense we won't have to have if we go regional. Enhanced technology. We will have modern technology, and we'll have the future ability to purchase modern technology through the regional center. Look what's happening with technology. Just 20 years ago, most people picked up the landline and called 911 or called the police station. That does, that's not what happens today. You have a cell phone. One incident, one incident would generate maybe one, maybe two calls back 20 years ago. One incident today generates 10, 15, 20 calls. Somebody has to answer all those calls. Modern technology helps you do that. The stuff we can't invest in because we don't have the funding. We just can't, simply can't do it unless we want to raise all your taxes, which certainly I don't. I'm a taxpayer. I don't want my taxes to go up. The other thing it does is it creates redundant systems. So if there are power outages or there's some kind of catastrophe, there are other systems that will come up online so that you never, you never lose your 911 service. We can't afford to provide those services to you in this town with what we've, with the budgets we have. We simply can't. That's the honest truth. In addition, all those towns, 10 or 13 hopefully, will improve mutual aid. We'll be using, we will be using all the same systems. So we'll be able to call in mutual aid without any worry about the calls not going through or we're not using the same radio frequencies. Everybody will be uniform. So some of the cons, some of the things against this that I also want to go over because I've heard this a lot from people, loss of local knowledge, as I said. None of the folks that work in dispatch today work here, live here. They weren't born here. They all live out of town. Personal connection with, you know, kind of a personal connection with the police department and the fire department. Well, I bet you, I bet you 99.9% of the people in this town couldn't name one individual that works in dispatch. Control. Who's going to control it? The town is going to lose control. We may lose a little control, but not much because we're going to have this, this regional system is going to be, you have a governing board. And that governing board is going to consist of representatives from either the council or town manager and, and each town. It's also going to have an operations committee, which will include the police and fire chiefs from each of the towns. And a financial committee or administrative committee that will, will also include representatives of the town. So we will have our voice heard on this regional system. We are not going to lose our voice as to what happens. So as I see it, we save a lot of money. We improve the efficiency of the dispatch system, which improves public safety. We have access to the latest technology and better interoperability between all the departments. So as I see it, there is absolutely no reason to vote against this matter. Thank you.
Did you have your hand up, Counsel Adams?
Not yet, Mr. Chair.
Not yet?
Not yet.
You have further discussion with the council? Counsel Montague?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't sure what I was going to say tonight, but I've played this by a year, and I just wanted to fact-check a couple of things, and if Chief Woodson wants to just tell me if I'm wrong. But that's it. I was told that any savings that come from this will not come into general fund to balance the tax rate. It's all going to go back into police budget. And again, you don't have to come up. I'm pretty sure that's accurate. Then salary increases to add staff is 209,000 plus the fringe benefits and a different budget of 182,000. Then the per diem, the overtime, the sick coverage, the shift differential, the holiday, the uniforms, that would be an increase of 39.3,000 if we fixed it in-house with all the recommendations made by the chief. And then there's about additional $35,000 in hardware software that happens every year, plus $100,000 for bottom-line raises for the dispatchers so they can compete, and that comes out to $383,000 and 182,000 in fringe benefits, which is $566,000. And I just wanted to make those numbers known to everybody. I sat with the chief to hash those numbers out, and that would be the increase to the budget if we were to fix it locally someday with the proposals that he made and gave us at PPP, which I really appreciate all the hard work and thank you very much for that. That's all I have.
We've deliberated. The public has spoken. Go ahead, Counsel Adams.
So, and I appreciate everybody's reasoning behind this. So I just want to make this clear. Dispatchers deal with the police officers as well as the fire department, and they go into some dangerous stuff as well, and we expect proper communication. So I just want to throw that in when it comes to dispatch. Want to point a clarification real quick. The 14 individuals Mr. Belanger had brought up here was when the council asked for what would be equivalent in our community and to, to equal out what the regional would be. They said 14. The chief stated 14. The regional is 11. I thought I explained that before, but that's okay. Lastly, and I'll try to keep this quick because I think everybody knows what I posted the other day, and by all means, I don't want to read it off this evening. As far as the safety concern from the counselors has been answered by the police chiefs, and they did a fine job explaining that to us along with all the union and the subject matter experts that Counsel Kelly had brought up. Also, the communication, fast results and stuff like that has been brought up multiple times and has been answered multiple times on it. And you can actually watch that on YouTube as well. The overall cost of this subject is, you know, I would say there's a lot of, the numbers on what I'm hearing right now are not correct, and I'm going to tell you, this town cannot afford the money in which it's going to come budget season. It cannot. I will also state this, we don't have a lot of money. We're at our max taxable levy right now. We're going to depend on new growth. We're not going to have that. But I just wanted to bring up, the most important thing here is safety. We don't have all this money. It's, all these things have been answered already and for the reasons for. Now, like I would do with the town manager, I'd ask questions when I have questions. Chair, I'd do the same thing, and, and nobody has to answer this question or anything like that, but I watched the PPP, and all three PPP members voted negatively, yet I haven't heard from them and what their thought process was. They don't have to answer this, just like nobody else has to answer to me at all. Freedom of speech. But I'd like to know why it was a zero to three vote and what made you vote it down? And that's it. You don't have to answer it. I'm just offering it up. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All counselors, thank you very much. Everybody has had their opinion. Everybody's done their homework. Every, I'm sorry, Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair for you. I'm just going to say it the way it is. Some people might not like it. I hear numbers, papers, pen, calculators, it's all estimates, it's all guessing that they're all numbers. Nothing is real. We don't know where we're going. Just a guessing. When they came in and they say the fire department fallen down, we need a new fire department. We trust the experts. We trust their word. They never hire an structured engineer to see the fire department fallen down. I believe them. I went and vote, supposed to be $20 million, $25 million. Now we're in $30 million.
Out of order. Stick to the agenda.
Now, they're cool with it. No problem. We can afford that. We can afford that. No problem. Now we come to dispatcher regional. Supposedly, when I discussed that with the chief about saving the town money, it never came a safety issue, and from nowhere came safety issue. They put a number together, but they're not telling the truth to residents. We're going to get rid of the dispatcher. We're going to hire more officer and firefighter. Where are we saving money? We get rid of example, $50,000 a year for a dispatcher. We're hiring $125,000 officer or firefighter. Where are we saving money? Let's say the truth to the people. Stop lying to the residents. I am residents in town of Southbridge. I pay tax. I'm going to vote what I think the best for the town. I believe you. I believe you twenty-five million dollar fire department, but it's not going to go through anymore. New ambulance will give you, new equipment.
Point of order.
We give you equipment for the firefighter training.
Point of order.
Anything you ask for the firefighter.
Point of order. Point of order.
Right now.
Point of order.
He's gone out of order.
He's not talking about the agenda.
Expenses.
Stick to the agenda.
Go ahead, Counsel Dow.
Right now, just because we see a different way. Seventeen thousand people living in this town, four people came in for the residents. I respect the worker, I respect the firefighter, I respect the chief's opinion, but we do be on the street all day, listen to the residents, what they recommend. None of them tell me vote yes for that. You only believe the people's numbers they put it together, but nothing guaranteed. It's all guess, it's all estimate. So we saving a little money at the beginning, but a couple years from now, we don't know where we're going to be. And this is the scary part. We never see any saving with all these idea come. We losing all our local, probably is going to call me out of orders. Water.
Nah, I'm done with that. Thank you though.
All this stuff, we give it up, and look where we are right now. And look where we are right now. And now we're doing the other mistake again. We're giving the dispatcher. Five years ago, they came up, I was in council, probably, they say the best thing you can do, put the fire department in dispatcher, the police department, is the best thing ever you can do. Wow, it's the best we did. It's a perfect, no problem, no incidents, everybody perfect. Now, because we don't agree with the regional dispatcher, we're not going to cancel. We're a bad councilor right now. But you know what? In eight months, we're going to go back, and I wasn't going to run, but this time I am going to run, and I'm going to prove the people, they got to vote for me again. Thank you.
Enough. If we wanted a debate, I would have had a different forum. The people have spoken, I wanted to give everybody their time. Everybody has spoken and wants to speak. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Roll call vote.
Roll call. Roll call vote. The citizens had their time.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
No.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
No.
Counselor Provost?
No.
Counselor Lazo?
No.
Counselor Montigny?
No.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shenier?
No.
Six-three motion fails. Moving on to agenda item number nineteen, vote to approve the Southbridge Housing Production Plan.
So moved.
The motion in a second. Now go to Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Items number nineteen through twenty-four inclusive, all were voted unanimously three oh to move forward to council.
Any discussion on the Southbridge Housing Production Plan? Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. The Housing Production Plan was brought forward in June of 2025. Members of the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, Board of Health, a former town counselor, the town planner, and the Economic Development Director, all on the formation, we're all in on the formation of this eighty-two page plan. I firmly believe that these Southbridge residents and employees have the best interest of the town at heart. Mass General R Chapter Forty-B requires, let me repeat that, requires cities and towns to work towards a ten percent level of housing stock that people earning less than eighty percent of the area median income can move into. We are currently at approximately six point five percent of housing stock. We have four constituencies we are looking to help. The veterans, people with disabilities, the elderly, and the disadvantaged. This plan helps provide strategies and the necessary background to help Southbridge attain this goal while considering the needs and abilities of Southbridge to deliver services and also take into account the character of the town. Because we are at approximately six point five percent, a developer can come into town at any time and propose any size development that is partially composed of affordable housing. The developer goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a comprehensive permit, bypassing the other boards in town, and the ZB, the ZBA is required to approve the comprehensive permit granting the building of the development. If they don't, there's an appeal to a state agency, and we all know how that will turn out. I firmly believe that if we do not start to be proactive, it will hurt us in the end. Also, I firmly believe that I, as an elected counselor, have a duty to provide for all our citizens who are in need. I will therefore support this item this evening.
Any discussion?
Question, Chair. Is that the one we're gonna change some areas, we're going to do any amendment here or later in the future?
This is a different plan.
Different plan?
Different plan.
Any further discussion? Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So I just want to say that I'm going to support the Housing Production Plan as it's written. Like I said in committee though, I, I do believe that it's one thing to have a plan, it's another thing to execute the plan, and one of the things I didn't see in the plan was how we are going to get to the numbers that plan anticipates or says we need to get to. So I think we need to brainstorm a little bit, maybe at the committee level, and come up with some ideas on how we can incentivize particularly private landlords, private property owners to, to meet some of the goals that we have set out in that Housing Production Plan. Thank you.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Absolutely would be voting for this this evening. It was a, you know, I gotta give kudos to Katie and Peg and all the hard work you, Katie, you put into this and the briefs that you gave us. And to understand that we won't be penalized for certain things, but it controls possibly some of the forty Bs that may try to come in here and become hostile forty Bs. And I think it's a great thing for the town itself as we move forward into some of the specialized housing if we have to, while, while at the same time keeping the integrity of some of our housing that we have intact and kind of controlling what could have happened over here on Elm Street. So I absolutely vote in favor of this, and I look forward to working down the road with Katie and Peg with some other housing areas. Thank you.
Any other discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor?
Roll call please.
Roll call.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Provost?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Shenier?
I can't hear.
Oh, sorry, Counsel, you're up.
Pass the crowd to go out into the foyer so we can finish our meeting, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
All in favor?
In unanimous, all present. Moving on to general item number twenty, vote to authorize the town to acquire by donations or otherwise permanent easements for public way purposes, including without limitation for pedestrian and vehicle access to and from the Quinneborg Valley Rail Trail shared use path and for any and all purposes incidental or related thereto in, on, and under certain parcels of land located at thirty-eight Walnut Street and one fifty Main Street, Southbridge, shown as a proposed easement A, proposed easement B on the plan entitled Topographic Plan and Land Prepared by BSC Group. As said plan may be amended and further to authorize the town manager to enter into instruments, all instruments includes to execute acceptance for said easements and to take any and all actions as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the foregoing purposes.
So moved.
Motion in a second.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, boy, you had to write that.
I, I can't hear, it's echoing back to the point where.
Chief, fire chief, excuse me. Can you take that conversation out, please? Counsel Shenier, go ahead.
No, I'm good, I just, I couldn't hear.
Is there a motion, do we have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Discussion. No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to twenty-one, vote to approve the extension to AF Amarillo's contract to complete the River Crane Phase One construction by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion. No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to twenty-two, vote to approve a contract extension of the Mass Works grant to complete the River Crane Street Phase One by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second, discussion. No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to twenty-three, vote to approve an extension of the David G Roach's contract to complete the Quinneborg Valley Rail Trail by April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, discussion. If no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to twenty-four, vote to approve an extension to the EDA's travel tourism and outdoor recreation grants by April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, allow town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion. No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to council's forum, Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just want to congratulate the Rios family on receiving a ninety-eight thousand dollar grant and a twenty-five thousand dollar grant for their playground. Well deserved, and we look forward to seeing that, the ribbon cutting soon. It was brought to many counselors the other day by Shelley, who spoke up here earlier about some of the numbers, about curbside numbers. I just want to let the public know that I've already spoken with Counselor Montigny and Counselor Lazo to have a discussion on this issue. So the council involved has to be, you know, we're going to move forward with this to have that conversation and take a look at the numbers that have been presented to us. And I do appreciate the acting town manager for getting everything moved forward that you stated tonight. So thank you so much for doing that. Transfer station, I met with Maritza, we've went to one transfer station, I believe there was another one, they went a couple of days later, I couldn't make it. And we're going to start putting some stuff together and also getting with the chair to have just a, like a, counsel the whole discussion of what expectations maybe the town council may have on a transfer station and see what their thoughts are. But I'll work that out with the chair down the road. Also, I have a receiver meeting coming up very soon, and looking forward to the rail trail ribbon cutting on November seventh. Thank you, Peg, and thank all those that have supported it, and all the cleanup that they just did the other day, and all the residents are cleaning up, so it's amazing. And I want to thank the auxiliary, the Veterans Council, Veterans Council of Southbridge Auxiliary for having their fundraiser and thinking about the veterans and their family members. It was an amazing event, well, it sold out, it was great. Congratulations to Gateway Players on their fiftieth anniversary. The gala was outstanding. They did a great job, and thank you for all the work that they did in putting that together. And lastly, couldn't be remiss without wishing my Marine Corps a two-hundred-fiftieth birthday on November tenth. They'll be two hundred fifty years old. I can argue the point all day about a very good branch, but I do know we have some veterans amongst us, but nothing but a little competition, but I, anytime, anywhere on that one, but I wish them and all of us a happy birthday. And again, Veterans Day and Veterans Day Ceremony and luncheon is coming up, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Maybe you can get some cake?
Not for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'd like to thank Senator Fatman and Representative Marcy for attending today and providing young David Poirot with the declarations from both the House, this House and Senate. It's important to recognize people like that, young, especially young, young people who are taking an initiative and serving their community. I like to see, I'd love to see more of that in our world today, but this, he is a, he is a shining example, and I do thank, and I think it's important that Senator Fatman and Representative Marcy took the time out of their schedules to be here and to be here in person to present those documents. I had the honor of attending the Veterans Auxiliary fundraiser. It was fantastic for a great cause. All the folks involved in that did a great job. So that was another great thing that's going on in our community, people organizing and raising funds for people, people who needed veterans in this particular case. I want to just talk about the rail trail for a minute. I think maybe, I don't know if we can put this on somebody's agenda, but I am a little concerned about e-bikes on that trail, just in walking the streets of Worcester, you got kids on e-bikes that practically take you out all the time. You know, I mean, people, we'd be walking on that trail, you walk, it's about, you walk about two and a half to three miles an hour. If you run, you run maybe five miles to ten miles, to eight miles an hour. A regular bike, bike, you might get it up, most people will get it up to ten to fifteen miles an hour at most. These e-bikes, the class one and class two, which are the lowest ones, they reach speeds of twenty miles per hour, and the class threes go up to twenty-eight miles per hour. That would be dangerous on, on, you know, speeds would be absolutely dangerous on a trail like that. So I'm hoping that the, whatever committee we have that's going to look at this, public safety, perhaps might carve out some regulations concerning e-bikes. That's just something I think we should get ahead of before, before it really opens to the public. Thank you.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Residents of Southbridge, the one put me in here to make sure your voice was heard. Nothing is going to stop me to looking for you and make sure your voice is heard, either if the block, the way I'm leaving the town hall, if either I be threatened on Facebook, either if I be threatened straightforward in my face, I don't care. You guys elect me, I make sure, doing good job for you, make sure your voice heard, and I'm here for you. Thank you.
Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. At last Wednesday's Planning and Development Subcommittee meeting, Peg Dean brought forward a report on the number of grants that have been in process for the last five years. Okay, give or take. And she's reporting that between twenty-three and twenty-seven million dollars in grants are either closed or in the process of being used right now, or in the pipeline coming to town. Twenty-seven million dollars in five years. I think she's done an excellent job in supervising this process. I know it hasn't been all her, so I apologize to those people that I don't know that are also involved, Peg's team and other people as well, but Peg is the coordinator of all this, and I dare say that if it wasn't for Peg, we wouldn't be having that kind of grant work being done in town. I think that the townsfolk owe her twenty-seven million thank yous for the work that she's done. Twenty-seven million dollars is almost the entire municipal budget for the town of Southridge, the municipal side of the budget. So that's just incredible. I look forward to continuing to work with her in my subcommittee and finding more money. So I appreciate that very much.
The only thing I can say, Peg, is thank you and don't stop.
That's right.
Counselor, I can't remember your name.
I can't remember yours either.
Counsel Gil.
I have nothing tonight.
Counsel Ortiz?
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Shenier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank Senator, the Senator and the state rep for representing the community at the State House to recognize David. I had the pleasure of being at the Senior Center when, when David provided the meal. He came with his grandmother and worked the floor serving and meeting the residents and senior citizens at the Casablanca Senior Center. I also want to thank I also want to thank Chairman Lazo for making an proclamation for the, for the community. David is a prime example of what we need more of today in this, this world. There is so much hate amongst the people in this world that David is a prime example on how he can make, oh, we can make a better place to live. On a different note, I come to council meetings and I try to do my diligence on all the subject matters that we have. Sometimes I agree and sometimes I don't agree. But the bottom line is, is when I leave here, I don't leave with hate. I leave here saying we're going to go on to the next battle, the next fight. I respect all your opinions and I hope you expect, respect my opinions. I think we, as a council in a whole, have done generally good things in these last few years and look forward to being able to continue this. We're not always going to agree. Subject matter is going to be hot, but I am hopeful that we all walk away here in a civil manner and continue with our efforts to serve the community. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
If I could just add a quick thing on the end of Counselor Shenier, on that little boy, that was impressive. I've never seen anybody that age think that way. And I know it's a lot of kudos to the child, but I give the kudos to the parents and the family. The child is brought up correctly. They could actually give lessons. Moving on to discussion, next meeting day. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next meeting is November 17, 2025 at 7:00 PM in East Chambers.
Number 27, vote to enter into executive session pursuant.
Second.
Let me finish, guys. Vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, 21, under the following sections. Three, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining and litigation if the open meeting may be detrimental in the effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair. So declares collective bargaining units. Number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Where a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz.
Yes.
Counselor Provost.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Shenier.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
And Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Will, the town council will adjourn into executive session and not return into open session.